To turn on my mic. There we go. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of February 2nd, 2022. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 19th, 2022.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Rodenberg.
Shelley.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, the first item on consent is 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 22001 to review as to conformance with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. A request to declare the property commonly known as Fire Station Number 12 as surplus, generally located at 2201 South 84th Street. Next is item 1.2, Street and Alley Vacation 21008 to vacate approximately 559 feet of Terra Hill Lane west of South 59th Street Circle and the South 59th Street Coalition PUD adjacent to property generally located at South 59th Street Circle and Pine Lake Road. And 1.3, Street and Alley Vacation 21009 to vacate a portion of North 33rd Street at Schroer Drive on property generally located at North 33rd Street and Schroer Drive. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
I want to talk about 1.2.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Shelley.
Okay, are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
I don't see any. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? Okay, so we will entertain a motion for 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 22001 and 1.3, Street and Alley Vacation 21009.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Cor. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
The first item will be from the consent agenda, 1.2, Street and Alley Vacation 21008.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Before we do have this first item, we do want to welcome Alexis Longstreet, our new administrative assistant, who will be assisting the Planning Commission here. She's a recent graduate from the University of Kentucky and is actually a new resident of Lincoln. So welcome both to our department and our city as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and briefly go over the Street and Alley Vacation. We are north of Pine Lake Road, east of 56th Street. This is a street that was platted as Terra Hill Lane. It's just really half of the width of a normal right-of-way. It's just off 59th Street Circle. This street was identified to be vacated, and, good, we got it up on the viewer there, as part of a PUD that was approved in 2020. The PUD, if we'll try to zoom in here a little bit, set up really a whole new street system along with the single-family attached lots that would be part of that. The street initially was shown to cross the drainage way here. It's a fairly significant drainage way and one that Lincoln Transportation Utilities thought was not a good spot to cross the drainage way. Instead, we'll be crossing that drainage way further to the north, connecting this little development that's part of what's called the 59th Street Coalition with the existing development to the north. So the applications were turned in by the property owners on either side for this vacation. Vacations have to go off to the City Council for approval. And once this vacation is done, that will allow them to go ahead and plat the streets' network here per the PUD.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions, otherwise I know Mike Eckert is here on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, applicant testimony?
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Steve did a great job there summarizing that, and it is a result of the coalition that we formed. I'm going to show this map in a little more detail and explain how we kind of got to this point from a design perspective. Does come up. All right. Go back to Steve's.
Does she need to hit the button?
Yeah.
Oh. There you go. This is training today.
There's a lot of buttons up here.
We are going to be of no help.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. So, yeah, and the Zoom doesn't seem to be...
Oh, I think that's still the computer over there, the laptop.
Oh, that is the computer.
You, oh.
Let's see if we switch. No signal. Well, we can go back to the computer. Does the mouse work on that, Steve? Yeah. Let's go back to the one with the computer, and I'll step over here, and hopefully you can kind of follow the mouse. I guess what I just wanted to elaborate on without taking too much time was when we -- this is a very unique area of town where there were five acreage lots platted and a platted street that's still a gravel road, 59th Street here coming off of Pine Lake. And so when we did the development to the north here, there was a planned connection right here where I've got the mouse, and there is a pretty large volume of water that comes from south of Pine Lake, off the Campbell property and some other areas, the Madonna Proactive area and the new dermatology place. And so when we were working with Planning and Public Works on this, this portion of this planned unit development for townhomes, we knew Terra Hill Lane was here, but it was going to be a very expensive crossing to come over and serve these properties over here. And so it was kind of actually off the screen on the PUD was how we did demonstrate to Planning and Public Works how the -- there could be a cul-de-sac come down here. Oh, yeah. Red man, it was off.
Yep.
After all my times up here, I learned that. Yeah, yeah, we'll switch back to this then. Thank you. So it demonstrated how there is a cul-de-sac. We showed how a cul-de-sac could come down here. That connects up to 56th Street, comes over and comes down to serve all these properties. And so we wouldn't have to have this second crossing. And a big reason was, as Steve said, watershed wanted to limit these as much as possible, and it would be a triple box culvert that would cost about $250,000. And so with that, we've got the Edmery family onboard signing on the petition to vacate the right-of-way, and Tuscany Town Homes signing to vacate it. So it's just a vacation, and then very, very shortly, we will be coming in with executive order plans to build 59th Street and this connecting street here. And so this is just an attempt to get that vacation through before the plating process. So be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mike? Thank you so much. Is there any testimony in support of this application? If there's no neutral testimony, is there any testimony in opposition?
My name is Kenneth Cook, 6831 Sumner, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm also the trustee of the HAVCO Family Trust. We own the property right at the terminus of Terra Hill. Terra Hill provides access to the east of our property. The gentleman before me was just showing that they were going to put -- thinking about putting a cul-de-sac.
See when you're...
I don't have a piece of paper to put on there.
Oh, they're pulling it up.
Yeah. There you go. We can now see what's in front of you. If you want to point it out, sorry.
Maybe, yeah, okay. So my property is right here. There's five and a half acres right there. We initially bought that property seeing that Terra Hill would be granite egress to the east. Now they're talking about coming in over here and putting a cul-de-sac which cuts the property in half and would not allow the usage of this back area for development. That's my opposition to it, is that the road is originally there and we -- or was planned. That's what we purchased our property for, that would give us access, more than one form of access.
Do you, is there a, can you tell me, is there a house or what are you...
There is currently a house there. We're looking to develop that into some multifamily usage here in the near future.
So your understanding was that, or you purchased that property with the understanding...
Property knowing that that road would be put in at some point in time, and that would provide us egress to the east. We have egress to 56th Street, but 56th Street is very congested. Going through Shadow Pines, which would be this cul-de-sac that they predetermined or some been predetermined, that also goes right back to 56th Street, and that goes through a major residential area.
Questions? Yeah, Dick?
But that street would have to come out to 56th, or come out to Pine Lake Road.
Yes.
And there's no eastward movement at that point because there's a median in Pine Lake Road.
Correct.
So you'd only be able to go west.
You could go west, or you could U-turn at Pioneer, or 56th.
Or 61st.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just provides another form of egress from the property.
Is it more the division of your property by the cul-de-sac or the access at some point?
The access, total access. If they do put, if, I don't know where that cul-de-sac came from. It was not on anything that we ever saw when we bought the property. I guess that's been added since. That would cut the property in half and diminish the number of lots we would have to, for building.
And your plan would be to do multiple family?
Multiple family or apartments.
When did you buy the property?
Six or seven years ago.
Any other questions? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Yep. Any other testimony in opposition? Staff questions?
Steve, would there be an LTU access management policy that, I'm looking at that, and that's pretty close to that intersection. I can't tell how close.
Just a moment here. We'll get ourselves situated. Okay, so the HAVCO property is shown here in red. And so the HAVCO property has frontage on 56th Street, as was mentioned, and then also this 57th Street, which is stubbed into the street, into the property, that would be the other access point. And so we don't, there's no specific development plans for this property yet. Matter of fact, we'll turn on the zoning here. So that property is zoned R3 residential, like the rest of the properties around it. So it's not approved for apartments or townhomes. R3 allows single-family or two-family by right, but anything more dense than that, any apartments, that would all have to be part of an approved CUP. So let me turn off the zoning here. There is a fairly significant little drainage way through here, as was mentioned, and so with each drainage way, you have to address not only the cost of building the drainage way, but then also what impact that may have on the flow of water and on your detention and on everything else. And so with this property, regardless if there was a connection to Terra Hill Lane or not, 57th Street would be extended into this property because that street would need to be extended to serve the properties adjacent to it to the south. Each property, we're trying to have interconnectedness. That's part of the block length requirements. So no single property would just come in and cul-de-sack, and that would be the end of that. Because if we do not provide those connections, then the next two properties to the south may come in and say, well, since you did not provide a connection from a different direction, I have to take access off to 56th Street. And we have an access management policy that is adopted that on major arterials or minor arterial streets, we're trying to limit the number of access points because each access point you have often results in more crashes at those access points. So from this standpoint, you would have a street coming through that would already be bisecting the property into an east and a west half, which is not unusual for any development. Matter of fact, most times when people are talking about developing a property, there's streets that have to come through. In this case, if Terra Hill Lane was there and we had the required connection, they would have to build a street that then further divided it from the north-south street to now there is an east-west street, and that would now then be dividing it into three portions. Instead, someone with the street going north-south through it might just simply, if you're doing something in a multifamily range, and you'd have to see if multifamily was appropriate here with the traffic going back through the single-family attached to the north, multifamily might be more row houses, perhaps it's threeplexes, sixplexes, something like that. At this point, we're just kind of speculating. The zoning of the property is R3. But by not having the street connection go through, it also probably gives you more flexibility in what you would do on the east half and the west half. So from a development standpoint, we wouldn't view the lack of Terra Hill as something that would negatively impact the development of the HAVCO property. It looks like the culvert might fall more over on the other development to the east, but if not, there's certainly going to be some cost involved in grading and extending Terra Hill Lane over. So as we were reviewing the 59th Street Coalition, and I'll have to say from time to time, people have contacted us about this property, and so already had, we have already talked about how it might be done. The plan that was noted in the 59th Street Coalition PUD, and let me switch back over to that little drawing here. So on every PUD, preliminary plat, CUP, you're supposed to show what might happen on adjacent property. So this little street curving through over here doesn't have any legal standing. It's just showing that, okay, if I don't have Terra Hill Lane, this property over here would still have the ability to extend a street and have access. So the property, the HAVCO property, has access. I would also note just kind of the final thing here, legally, this is already an approved PUD. This is already a plan that went through the process notifying adjacent property owners, and this layout of which the street is being vacated is a part of that approved PUD, which basically really serves as a preliminary plat. So truly, in my view, this decision as to, were we going to continue to have this street? Should that street connect to other property? That was decided when the PUD was approved. This is really much more of an administrative step. That was why it was on consent, is that this is just following the PUD. This isn't an independent street and alley vacation. It is something that was clearly identified in the PUD to be approved, and that this street was no longer going to be required. And at this point, the applicant is just simply finishing the paperwork part of the process. The decision-making part of the process has already occurred. And I do see that we have Tim to see here if you have any questions in terms of the process. I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions you might have.
When was that PUD approved?
In 2020.
Can you go back to the development viewer? The, yeah, so it looks to me like there's multiple opportunities for other access points to this parcel.
Yes, I mean, technically, they could have said, well, I'd like to have access to 56th Street. But again, as part of our access management policy, we will probably say it is too close to this other existing ones. We weren't necessarily planning here on a four-way intersection. I suppose someone could come in and look at that. But at the very least, access has been provided in that 57th Street is coming through. And it is not unusual for a property in and of itself to have one access to the north and one to the south, but since there's nothing to the south yet, functionally, it has only one way in and out. Ultimately, that's why we try to like to have connections so that we do have at least two ways in and out for any property. And we happen to actually have Pat Borath, Lincoln Fire and Rescue, here today, and he's one that we count on for that review, and that's certainly always something Lincoln Fire and Rescue is looking for, is to make sure that there's some additional way to try to get in and out of a property.
So if this parcel was platted, planned before the ones to the south were, they could kind of dictate where that south connection would be?
Yeah, so when this, if they come in for a plan now and they propose it to be here or the south connection over here, again, we do ask to show, well, what does that mean for the property to the south of you? So we look very carefully as to where one person shows the access, how that might positively or negatively impact the other person. And certainly, we also try to look at the topography, too, in terms of making this access points. And certainly, if this had been a flat piece of property, we might have kept Terra Hill Lane to have an access point over there. I just quickly turned on the contours, and these contours represent the darker line every 10 feet difference in elevation. The smaller lines are in here, help kind of show you how it's falling down. And so, yes, definitely, as you look at this property, you're going from a 1290 to 1280 down to 1270. So you have a, just in that part of it, a 20-foot drop. And so it's because of this drainage way in here is one that we actually agreed to get rid of that connection with the PUD because of the cost and because of the watershed implications of it as well.
Steve, would you pull that down further north?
To show more of the land to the north?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so what Mike Eckert was talking about is that his client, Tuscany Town Homes, is looking to build this property further with townhomes, and that will be connecting to 59th Street over here. So this development will cut 59th Street and come over to 56th, but it'll also have this 59th Street extension to the south. Here, with this drainage way, will there be another connection out to 56th Street? That's something we'd have to look at when this property, the HAVCO property, does actually come in to develop, or is it just a stub to the property to the south, and we'll address it further to the south?
Can you go a little further north yet?
Sure.
Okay, that property in, that...
Up here?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
One of those has been approved for development.
There's actually a development plan approved on both of them.
Okay.
One was actually much further earlier, and they haven't done anything.
Yeah.
And so that extends the streets through here. These two streets then connect, and that street comes up and goes out to 56th Street.
Okay.
So there's Shadow Pines Drive, and in the future, there'll be another connection to 56th Street up to here so that we don't end up with everybody in this neighborhood having to come and go out Shadow Pines.
Right.
We'll have another way out. It's just the owners of those two properties have not yet come forward to do the final plat, put in the infrastructure on those streets.
Well, there's one that's grading right now, and...
It's probably this one here, I think, is the one that is, most recently came in, and I think moving forward, this is a little bit older plan, and I'm not sure if the owner, B&amp;J Partnership, have decided to move forward with that or not.
Right, okay. So there will be another access out to 56th?
Correct, correct. The Shadow Pines Drive won't be the only one.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, applicant rebuttal?
Yeah, I want to go ahead and use, use computer here and turn on the floodplain. Yeah, I want to go ahead and use, use computer here and turn on the floodplain and maybe get the aerial back on. And so this, well, this won't do any good because this is, this floodplain is mapped on a regional perspective through here, and I don't think it's going to show on this map. However, it is a significant amount of volume. Under the modeling, there's both floodway and floodplain, and so it is no easy or cheap venture to cross that. And one thing I wanted to explain to our neighbor here who's testifying is that what we've done in similar circumstances the past couple of years on projects is that if Terra Hill was to be a street and the box culvert and/or bridge going through here, if it does straddle onto another property, what we've been, had to do on a fairly recent project is, is that the street would stop short, kind of where the cursor is. And then we would place into escrow an amount of money to finish it on this property. Then, when this development comes forward, and as Steve said, the expectation would be to carry a street network to the south, and if this street stubs in here, then our neighbor would be responsible for building another street connection to there, and then picking up their subsequent portion of the box culvert cost and the grading cost. And so while it is a, another way in and out of the lot that they own, it would be, they would be participating in a very expensive crossing that both Planning and Public Works have said is not needed in this case. And then I was glad that Steve pointed out that, yeah, if you come up Shadow Lane and then this 59th Street will come down and make this connection. And so even this property or all of these people, if there is, there will be a day very soon when, if they choose not to go out to 56th Street to try to get, say, to Campbell's Nursery, they can come up Shadow Lane, down here, and come out here. And this is a, this is a, this is a full-access intersection here. And we have in the, in the PUD, another full-access intersection here at 61st. But that would provide movement down there. And then I was also glad they pointed out that there's going to be the second connection up there. So plenty of connectivity, there was a lot of thought put into this, it was in the PUD. And so, and I just want to make that, the owner aware that there is a significant amount of cost here, and as Steve mentioned, you bring a street in from a design perspective, it's going to, it makes things probably pretty tight on that property for doing some multifamily buildings, if that's the intention. So that's my two cents, but just wanted to reiterate, we would probably bring it to a point and stop it, put money in escrow, and then he would need to pick up the remaining cost when he would develop, we would, the city would draw on our money, and then the box culvert, or if it is a bridge span, would have to be constructed that way. So I, I can see the benefit for some direct connectivity to some degree, but in my experience in working in development, the cost, to be able to get rid of that cost, I view as quite favorable. So, and again, I would just reiterate that we did have the approved PUD, and this is kind of going in line with that. We have both of the adjacent neighbors on board with the petition to vacate. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mike, I just want to make sure I'm hearing what you say. I hear basically two main points, actually a third one, but the third one is the PUD is already approved. It's probably going to be more cost-effective for both of your developments to move that connectivity on the south side where it doesn't have to cross where it's so...
Yeah, absolutely. It, you know, it was a discussion we had, and we looked at the street network and the connections, and we knew we definitely, you know, had to make this connection up here to Joshua's Glen Development, and that also then provides all these people access out to there. But yeah, there was pretty thorough thought, and this has been a, I'm very grateful that this has been something that Planning and Public Works have been working on. Because of our watershed standards, watershed management standards, and the amount of water we can back up, we end up having to do very large box culverts and/or bridge spans. And so the, basically, a cost-benefit was done and determined that if we have the connection to the north, that provides another EMT route besides Pine Lake, and that they could live with that.
So more cost-effective if they had a southern connection that didn't have to cross the valley, I'll call it a valley, I don't know what to call it really. And then number two is, even if you did construct Terra Hill Lane as it was originally back in the day planned, that would only go to the property line and the neighbor on this parcel would have to bear the cost to get it to meet your...
Correct. So per code, we would plat that and have to build it to the property line. And so we had another example recently in a townhome development over off of Yankee Hill and 84th, where it was kind of literally impossible to finish the road to the property line because of the constraints of topography, and you'd need to get on the neighbor's property, and that neighbor wasn't ready to develop, so money's placed in escrow. But by code, the developer always takes the road to the property line, as well as the sewer, water, and storm sewer.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Core. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
I would move to approve the street and alley vacation 21008.
Is there a second? Second, Core, discussion.
Yeah, Mike, obviously, this is in my neighborhood, and there is a lot of water that goes through that. It, the pond in front of our 56th Street and Pine Lake Road store is a, is built to be a detention basin as well, and so that does help slow it down. But there is a tremendous amount of water that happens on the other side of the road that is collected from various sources, and it would be a very expensive and very difficult thing to have to build that over that drainage area. The second thing is, is that right now, as 57th Street has worked very well, creating a more major access at Shadow Pines coming out to 56th. And 56th is much easier to get up and down on than Pine Lake Road is. Pine Lake Road is carrying a tremendous amount of traffic right now. And so if I were living in that area, I would prefer going out to 56th than to Pine Lake Road. And so it's, I think for those two reasons, if nothing else, besides the cost, it is, it makes sense to vacate that, that street.
Anyone else?
Thanks for those comments, Dick, that makes sense. I think that it's been well thought out as to the different routes and the effects that it would have on adjoining property owners, and I think that the plan that has been brought forward makes sense, and I will support the vacation of the street and alley. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
Next item, Shelley?
The next items up for public hearing and administrative action is 4.1A, Annexation 21011, to annex approximately 61.28 acres, more or less, on property generally located at the northeast corner and southeast corner of West Pioneers Boulevard and South Folsom Street, associated with 4.1B, change of zone 21055, from AG to R4 PUD to the Fox, for the Foxtail Meadows PUD, for up to 15,000 square feet, a commercial floor area, and up to 650 residential units with adjustments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances on property generally located at the southeast corner of West Pioneers Boulevard and South Folsom Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any, no.
Are there any expertise communications that took place on it, or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
No.
Steve?
Steve Hennerston at the Planning Department, just give you a very brief overview because there's a very nice presentation from the applicant, that we'll get into a lot more of the details in terms of the specifics of the proposal. So we'll just give you the broad overview here of the two applications that are before you. The first is the annexation. So where we are here is that Homestead Expressway, Highway 77, is on the east side of the development proposal, and on the east side of the annexation. South Folsom Street is on the west. It is generally south of West Pioneers is where the development proposal is, but the annexation covers a little bit larger area. And the reason for that is that we are required to annex the adjacent right-of-way, so we're annexing South Folsom Street. We also think it makes sense to include the rest of Homestead Expressway, Highway 77 that is adjacent. And the infrastructure that is going to come through to serve this subdivision called Foxtail Meadows actually now makes it so that in the future, we'd be able to serve these lots that were platted along Tower Road. These lots on Tower Road are a little bit lower than the sewer line to the west and South Folsom, so they were not annexed in the past. But with this development, we can now have reasonable expectation of providing them some infrastructure in the future. So that annexation of four lots, two of the lots are owned by the Nebraska Department of Transportation, because they are looking at either doing an interchange or an overpass at this intersection, it'll no longer be a at-grade intersection with a signal. The other two lots have houses on them. So the annexation is broader than the change of zone, because it includes two other property owners who have been notified of this annexation. The change of zone itself, then, is just for this area south of Pioneers, between South Folsom and Highway 77. And the applicant will explain a little bit more about why there's not a lot of details with this change of zone to an R4 PUD, Planned Unit Development, because at this point, they're really just trying to get the big picture approved, which is the 650 dwelling units and the very little bit of commercial space of 15,000 square feet. They have a very nice mix planned of single-family detached, attached townhomes and multifamily, so this PUD approval will approve that mix. And it generally gives you kind of a skeleton, so to speak, of the road network that might come in here. I should also note that we are annexing Hope Community Church, which is a part of this overall project, and has agreed to sell part of their land and work with the developer. But so for the moment, it is just very much, it identifies the three access points, and as a part of the annexation, there will be an annexation agreement that will go directly to the City Council, and that agreement will then address those three intersections and how we get those improved to urban standards, so we have left and right turn lanes so people can get in and out of the development. Otherwise, infrastructure-wise, the city has agreed to extend a sanitary sewer line out to this area. There's already a water main in Folsom Street. We're going to have three different access points to this property, so it provides a good amount of connections. And then I would say, last but not least, certainly, is that this is very much exciting to see a, an affordable housing project in a newer developing area, because that is part of the goals of our comprehensive plan and our housing affordability plan, which is really to try to encourage affordable housing throughout the community, not just in older neighborhoods and through redevelopment, but through actually a brand-new development here. So really congratulate the Hoppies for working hard with a lot of different agencies to try to bring this project forward. But that also meant that at this point, they're not investing in all of the details that cost a lot of money to have those details, but first get the big picture done so that they can work on their grants, know their costs, and move forward from there. So if you have any other questions on the big picture, happy to answer those. Otherwise, the applicant can get into more of the details then as to their project.
Steve, can you show me, I was a little confused, or I just want to make sure I'm envisioning the right thing here. It talks about the northeast corner that's abutting Highway 77 for reduced setback. Since we've got this diagonal going on, can you show me which corner there?
Sure. It's basically this diagonal along here.
The whole, along the whole diagonal?
That diagonal along here, because basically, the adjacent property is a significant grade change, where this property is much lower than the adjacent property, which could be, if this is made into an interchange, this might be, you know, the ramp where you would come to get onto Highway 77. It would have awful, it'd have less moving traffic going through it, but it would also be significantly higher than the rest of it, except down at the southern end. The rest of the property is pretty much at the same grade as Highway 77, and so there's much more concern about having potentially dwelling units 10 feet away from the right-of-way of Highway 77. It was just on that northeast line because of the difference in topography, we thought, yes, it might be appropriate to have the units a little bit closer there.
This is a self-serving question that I've been meaning to ask, but I don't know that you will know the answer, but does Greenlight Lincoln apply to Highway 77?
You are correct, I do not know the answer.
I didn't know if because it's technically not in the city limits, and so bringing it into the city limits, if that would help.
Well, Highway 77 is under the Nebraska Department of Transportation, so probably the best answer is any city program, we could coordinate with NDOT, but NDOT has all the final decisions here in terms of the design of it and everything else that goes along with it.
This is my plug for We Need Greenlight Lincoln on Highway 77. Old Cheney especially.
You mentioned that we have a lot more information coming to us, but I'm curious about the two single-family homes that are being annexed in, and whether there's consent or the conversations have been with those homeowners.
Both those property owners were notified. One of them called and talked to the planner in our office and got their questions answered, and they certainly have the ability to come forward and either here or at the City Council and express if they have any opposition. Ultimately, it is up to the City Council to annex property or not. It does not need the approval of the specific property owner.
Any other questions for Steve at this time? Thank you.
I do, I do have one.
Oh, sorry.
Steve, is the property east of the dotted line already annexed?
So the, kind of this gray area here, that might be a little hard to see, this is the city limits today. There is, the city, the property to the west, to the south, and to the east is not in the city limits. City Limits is not very far away here, though, it'd be probably the equivalent of Sixth or Seventh Street along Pioneers. You would definitely be back in the city limits. For the moment, this is Wilderness Park, and this part of Wilderness Park is not yet in the city limits, but we think there'd be reason to do that. I would note that we do have another development proposal on the east side of Highway 77 between Pioneers and First Street, but that one is not yet ready to come forward to you. But we might be back in the future here with yet another change of zone and annexation for this land to the east, which is immediately adjacent to First Street and Wilderness Park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Testimony from the applicant.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tom Houston, my address is 233 South 13th Street here in Lincoln on behalf of Sofu Housing LLC and Hoppie Development. With me today is Fred Hoppie and Jake Hoppie, both are principals of the Hoppie Development and Jeremy Williams, who is the project engineer. And Jake will be providing us more specific project information regarding these two items on your agenda. It is exciting that we're here. We were here two weeks ago, it was kind of on your consent agenda, but it was a approval of our comprehensive plan conformity for the redevelopment plan, excuse me, the blight study for this area. And Hoppie Development has been working on this project for a considerable amount of time to bring a unique subdivision forward for residential development in the city of Lincoln. As Steve mentioned, this, the PUD would approve up to 650 dwelling units and neighborhood, and a small amount of commercial to provide some neighborhood commercial services, some neighborhood services. The annexation policy, I just want to touch on a couple of things on the annexation policy. Obviously, this area is designated, has been designated for 10 years as a growth area in the city of Lincoln, the southwest... in the city of Lincoln, the southwest area of the city. It's in the tier-one, priority-A area, and it's meaning it's ready for annexation. Municipal services are ready and available, both the water trunk line, the water main, and also the sanitary sewer line was being extended. The other item on your agenda deals primarily with the change of zone, the, with the overlay PUD, the Planned Unit Development. The recently adopted Plan Forward 2050 does designate this area on the future land use map as urban residential and envisions a high-density residential development for this property. We agree with the staff report and all the policy decisions and why this subdivision and this project makes sense and conforms with a comprehensive plan and the city policies on the development. I want to talk a little bit about the site itself. The Hoppie Development worked with the adjacent property owner, Hope Reformed Community Church, for a number of months, worked through them with a process to evolve them and the decision-making on the design of the project, and also on working with the church through their own internal decision-making process, which was pretty complex in addition to the governmental approvals, and worked out a suitable development that met the objectives and design approval of the church, and that's why we have what we have in front of you today. The church owned 20 and a quarter acres. They'll be retaining approximately six and a half acres for their development, and the balance of 14 acres will be incorporated into this development for Hoppie Development as Foxtail Meadows. The design that Jake will talk to you a little bit about, in my mind, this is a very unique subdivision in the city of Lincoln, because it does combine multiple types of housing under one development proposal. When you look at the ultimate design, there are row homes and a variety of different types of design of row homes and townhomes. There's multifamily housing. There's detached, single-family dwelling housing. And also, this is a mixed-income development designed for a variety of income levels, which certainly is one of the planks of the comprehensive plan. The mixed income includes some low-income housing tax credit development. You may recall last fall, this body in the city of Lincoln approved Gatehouse Row on the east side, or excuse me, west side of Wayuka, that really, we indicated that it's going to be a template to moving forward on multifamily development with tax exempt bonds and 4% tax credits. Well, hopefully, this is going to be a project number two, at least for Hoppie Development, using that template. But those low-income housing tax credit projects will be designed for residents and families making no more than 60% of area median, area median income, which is approximately, for family four in Lancaster County, is $82,000. Well, also, this project will include some housing opportunities, both homeownership and rental, for the 80% area median income. It's kind of the missing middle, as it's described in the action plan adopted by the city. And also, this subdivision will include market-rate housing, providing single-family and attached, single-family for market-rate buyers. The project, because of 650 units, will be phased. It's generally going to be phased, probably in three phases, starting at the south and proceeding north. And work in the commercial area probably would be developed as a part of the second One last point on what, the PUD in front of you is really a generic kind of PUD, and it's because of the schedule that is required. The applications for the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, which is the allocation agency for the state of Nebraska, are due mid-March, and there's a lot of design detail that has to be worked out to get the full PUD plan, PUD approval, and we'll do that through the administrative process, complying with all the city design requirements. But in the application process for the financing tools, we have to be able to demonstrate city approvals for land use and annexation, for example. So that's why we have the generic PUD application in front of the city at this point. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Jake has a more entertaining PowerPoint and slideshow that we would show you more particulars about the variety of housing types and where they're going to be located.
Tom, is now the time to go into the waivers and what was put forth as to the waivers that were, that the applicant was requiring versus what the planning's recommendations were?
Well, I would ask probably Jeremy to come up and answer those, but I think we've worked through the majority of those.
Okay.
I think we have agreed that one waiver request was probably my misinterpretation of what the design requirements are going to be, but I think we have agreed on the balance of those. If not, I'll have Jeremy come up and address those separately.
Okay.
Tom, it might be helpful if they see Jake's presentation.
Sure. Yeah, that may be premature, so.
... asking for the...
So that's a good segue into Jake.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before the commission today. My name is Jake Hoppie. Live at 301 South 57th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We're really excited about this project. I think when we went through the Wayuka process, you know, one of the things we learned was, you know, the context matters for affordable housing. And as we think about scaling affordable housing to kind of meet the needs that are required in a community, we can do that with, certainly utilizing overlooked infill lots is an important part of that strategy. But if we can't go out and do greenfield new development, we're never going to respond at the scale for purpose-built affordable housing that the community of Lincoln needs. This is really innovative in the state of Nebraska, trying to develop from the ground up a new entire sort of subdivision or neighborhood that has not only new sort of urban standards for design and concepts that you might find in some places that are lauded in kind of the design community like Prairie Village, or in Omaha, but, but at the backbone of how we would execute the project, be thinking about meeting these different needs of affordable housing and the different programs that exist and being able to layer them together. So sort of fundamentally, what you're looking at is really an attempt on our part at innovation around how to take a bigger-scale plot, think about the programs and capabilities that exist, layer them on top of each other, and end up with a neighborhood in the end. So at its core, we're talking about, you know, getting an approval for up to 650 units and about one and a half acres of commercial space with a mix of densities, mix of rental and ownership, and targeting all the way down from 30% median income through, through market rate. The amenity and open space in Central Park, designing it all around sort of a shared set of amenities, parks, and open space. And really, the pitch, and we'll talk a bit about it in a moment, to Hope Community Church, was to take them from sort of a neighbor to a development, we had purchased the land south of them, to being a central amenity to this development, along with our commercial spaces, like, is kind of a hub or heart of the neighborhood. You know, the lofty goals, talking about those, we're really looking at how could we respond at scale to the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan and lay the groundwork for projects over, you know, that'll be developed over a five- to seven-year period. We wanted to demonstrate that affordable and market-rate housing can coexist in a new development context in a complementary fashion, and that they, you know, hopefully becoming an example that perhaps other for-profit developers might look to and think about, you know, there's a portion of our new development that could be allocated for affordable housing. These things aren't diametrically opposed, nor do they need to be completely separate. We wanted to create a sense of place and complete community. A lot of what's talked about in the new comprehensive plan is really, you know, how do you build out communities where people can attain the amenities and services they expect within close proximity to where they live? We're very focused on this idea of decentralizing and deconcentrating affordable housing out of some of the historic, high-poverty neighborhoods where it is often placed in Lincoln and Omaha and urban settings, and put it into, in this particular case, we're using a neighborhood metric that identifies this as a high-opportunity area for families and children. And so we are very excited about being able to put it in the context, in that context. And then finally, being able to get outside of just affordable rental opportunities and get into affordable ownership opportunities as well. So one of the other critiques that I feel like we, we have felt as developers is that there's a lot of affordable rental housing, there's not that much opportunity for affordable ownership, and what can we try and do to innovate around that? Just a little history. So we purchased the 27 acres originally as a public-private collaboration with Lincoln Community Foundation. This is the 27 acres south of the church, between the church and Optimist Land. We purchased it from the Optimist, I guess, foundation with support from the Lincoln Community Foundation and Westgate Bank, so kind of a public-private partnership. We immediately engaged Hope Community Church initially thinking, well, let's make sure as a good neighbor, we let them know we're planning on putting a big dense community next to them, and then talk about how might we share resources and infrastructure? And the initial idea was, you know, hey, we're probably going to build some parks. We might as well put them close to you so that your congregation can access them. You know, we share that sort of resource, it's not just being used for us. Hope Community Church kind of came back and said, you know, this looks really nice, and this is, fits within our mission and what we've always hoped to be, which was a community-based church. Would you consider selling, acquiring our 14 excess acres and helping us work through that process? So we did, and we included them in the design. They went through, we went through a long design process with them, showing them different iterations, agreeing on certain covenants for the land, and ultimately, the entire congregation, I think, maybe with the exception of one voter, voted to sell and participate the church in the development. So we were really excited about that. You know, we are making some requests to the city, and, you know, part of the reason for all of this context is I'm sure we will be before this body again. We are working with the city on looking at, is it possible to extend TIF and some other incentives to a peripheral area, and how might we consider other sort of infrastructure funds from the city to incentivize and catalyze affordable housing development? So those are some things in the, kind of the broader context that we're working through with city staff, and they've been great to, to help us work on that. And then we are partnering with different nonprofits and will continue to as we develop, especially around sort of the homeownership opportunities. So it's truly going to represent a collaborative effort across the community. When we talk about it, you know, I think the advantage that us as Hoppie Development lend is that we really think about these housing developments as a combination of different programs and utilizing those programs in order to meet different needs. And so we think about this site sort of in, in terms of eight different financing methodologies. I think what's important here is to think about, you know, we're looking at the first phase of really being probably around 160 to 170 light, tax-credit-funded units, which are utilizing federal tax credits for the purposes of rental homes affordable to 60% median income and below. We're also looking at a program and sort of developing a program around single-family workforce ownership, so looking at kind of the 80% to 100% median income. How can we catalyze the development of a spec home that then attaches to down payment assistance for the home buyer so that we can make those units, take them from kind of being $250,000 to $275,000 a unit, to maybe the effective price of being more like $225,000? So we're working on those applications now. And then we'll have just totally straight-up, you know, market units. We wanted to, in the end, this development is about 50/50 between, you know, truly income-restricted affordable units and market-rate units. We think that's a nice balance and kind of an example of what we understand to be best Again, you know, thinking about how we positioned our different amenities and kind of the commercial energy core adjacent to Hope Church for the purposes of integrating Hope within the broader community. This is a look kind of from Hope going south and how things will look, putting our park. And then we wanted to put a pavilion that, that we hope that they will utilize for outdoor sermons. It really was a back-and-forth with the congregation. We look at the 2050 plan, and we think this aligns very well with what the community of Lincoln has said is their priorities, and this just kind of lists, and I won't spend a lot of time here, but, you know, Ed, it's in the backbone, of course, it's adding to the safe, affordable, accessible housing, you know, both by the financing mechanisms which will make this income-restricted housing, you know, a large number of income-restricted units, but also focusing on different housing typologies than the city of Lincoln. You know, the preponderance historically has been very suburban, three-story, double-loaded hallways or single-family units. This creates a variety. We've considered a lot, this concept of a complete neighborhood. Fred has an anecdote that he thinks every kid should be able to walk and get a Snickers bar or an ice cream cone within their own neighborhood. And so that was a design concept that we gave to our, our site design team. And thinking about, you know, there's Wright Park, there's a future trail across the street, the new elementary school will be very proximate. It's really an ideal location. I mean, essentially, we competed with market-rate housing developing companies to buy this piece of land. So this is, you know, nothing that anyone wouldn't have wanted to purchase or a location that wouldn't have been good for that purpose. Think a lot about equity inclusion and just providing ownership, affordable ownership opportunities outside of historically redlined Lincoln neighborhoods, so that clearly, we hit it there. Healthy, active, and community, you know, we're adjacent to different parks. And then just the different policy objectives in developing neighborhoods, I think we are exemplary from that perspective as well. We really align with Lincoln's Coordinated Affordable Action Plan. Again, for the purposes of time, I won't go too far into this, but we, I think align from our perspective with both what Lincoln has said they want in affordable housing, as well as what the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority has wanted in affordable housing, and been able to combine it into this project. The initial things that we'll be bringing forward, and for the purposes of, you know, our different applications, what you're seeing is a very skeletal plan, what Steve was referencing, we need to get our annexation entitlements complete so that we can make our first round of applications in March. We are going to be pursuing a 4% project for kind of around 130 units. It'll be a combination of multifamily and row-home-style housing, all restricted to 60% median income. We'll have a second project that will follow immediately that'll serve down to probably 30% and 40% median income, be a little bit smaller project and a slightly different housing typology. But, you know, what we're going to be pushing on a little bit is, as we get into this further, is, and what we've been trying to play with is, you know, how do we, this is going to be a dense community. In part, that's to leverage both our investment and the investment that the city's going to be making in some of the improvements. And so we've tried to think a little bit differently about what sort of waivers and, you know, what's appropriate as we go into the design phase in order to get some of that density. And we're going to be working closely with the city on thinking about how do we creatively get to a good spot with the setbacks? And I think that's what you see is, you know, we put some different waiver requests in there. I think some of those, we're really probably going to defer until we bring actual projects forward so we can have a much better dialogue about what's needed and, as opposed to doing the blanket waiver decisions in advance when we really don't have the internal layouts to react to. But we are very, you know, I think in conclusion, and probably ready for me to conclude, but in conclusion, we are very excited about this project. It's really us trying to find some different ways of thinking about affordable housing, some different ways that we think can be an example for others to think about it and incorporate it into their designs. You know, I think Fred is sort of at the backbone of this, has taken considerable risk with some things that, you know, we're told by others can't be done, you know, that integrate or having affordable and market rate so closely integrated is a risk. There's different things that, you know, we just decided, we're going to show and figure out how we can do it in this project. We hope that this will be an example for other projects we might propose, but other projects others might propose as well. And so anyway, happy to answer any questions further.
Questions?
Jake, are you modeling this after any existing developments throughout the country?
So we really haven't found good exam, I mean, we mistakenly calling it Prairie Village, I think Prairie Queen in Omaha is often referenced as a, as a great example of different housing typologies, but it is not affordable. When we've looked at it, we've said, you know, we like what they're doing from an urban design perspective. We'd like to do that, but have affordability really at its core. So that's been sort of our mantra. We have not found, and I wish we, probably just our own limitations in looking, I'm sure there are other great examples of it, but we're just trying to figure out a little bit on our own.
Easy question. Was this presentation shared with the planning department? Did we get this? I don't believe I have it. No?
No, I don't believe so.
I don't know that we sent it in advance, but we're happy to share it, yeah.
The design we've shared?
Yeah. Yeah, we have those.
You're saying the planning, has it been shared with the planning commission?
He was just wondering if it was in our packet. I don't think it was.
Your PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, yes.
Jake, there's two Lincoln housing projects that don't go as far as what you are looking at doing, but do have the mix of market rate and low income. The one off of 56th Street.
Okay.
South of Pine Lake, and then the one off Pine Lake, right across from the school, down around, down around 25th or 6th in that area.
Yeah, and we should probably look at those.
They don't go as far as what you're doing, but those two are mixed-use.
Okay.
And rental.
Great. Great.
And Assuredy is also built along the Antelope Valley.
Right.
Right.
Some mixed use.
Yeah.
And affordable.
Right.
I just want to verify a couple of things. Um, so your park, you know, in the staff report, it talked about, um, a, a park area that is just to the east of the church property?
That's correct, yeah.
So are you having any park areas down kind of north of the south where, you know, there's some wooded area and I assume some drainage?
Yeah, so we have, uh, we have a couple of natural features that we're working around. Uh, this is a, a mound here, which we're turning into what we call kind of a parquelet. That's where we're anticipating having a playground, open space and community garden space. Uh, and then we'll have this, uh, which is a water man, stormwater management area, which will also be open and green space. And then as you can kind of get a flavor, the, the designers have tried to leave, I guess sort of integrating some open space throughout, uh, really in two areas. One in the south area in between these homes, and then there's a walking trail that connects all the units of housing. It's kind of a backbone, and then there's green space on both sides of that.
Um, when I was reviewing the information provided to us, um, I know that this doesn't really make a difference to us for approval, um, but your, the number of units on Exhibit B don't match what's in the letter. So, um, and I know that it's still well below the 650 units, but just if you are going to other bodies, um, you might want to make sure that those.
We, we did, and, and we'll certainly look and make sure there's not a discrepancy. We, if you count up the number of units that are anticipating the site plan, it's less than we're receiving approvals for.
Yep, 619.
Yeah.
It depends on which one you're looking at. That's why I'm saying like, for our purposes, it's not a big deal because it's still under the 650.
Yeah.
But, um, they don't jive, so.
Well, we'll try and, I'll, we'll look at it to clean it up. I guess one, just one comment is we wanted to entitle up to 6, but we don't, every year these programs change a little. What is an awardable application one year may not be the next year. So we just needed to give ourselves, this is, you know, kind of what we're putting together right now, the best image of what we think would, would be executed. But in three years, if NIFA changes what they consider to be a good tax credit project, it may dictate, may make changes to what we need to approve, yeah.
Um, so I want to make sure I heard you correctly. Um, I know that you are wanting to provide some homeownership opportunities, um, for lower income individuals. Did you say your price point is 225,000 for those?
Well, the price point for new construction on what's actually achievable is probably, I mean, we just got off a call today, the cheapest, um, for new construction was around 313 from another party. It's not where we.
Right.
Uh, we are looking at 250 to 275, and then provide, and then integrating it with a program that provides down payment assistance that can buy it down so that it's an effective price at more like 200 to 225.
Okay.
So that's where, you know, us trying to work with a couple of state agencies around what financing programs can be utilized and how we can pass that advantage on to, for homeownership, um, is critical.
Go ahead.
So it sounds like you're going to come back through for some tack increment financing?
Uh, yeah, that's the anticipation, yeah.
Okay, um, I have some more questions, but I think the staff will have to answer them.
Sure.
Do you anticipate then this as a homeowners association, uh, with services, your own snow plowing and mowing, or, uh, what, how do you foresee this?
That's how we've, we have a, you call it maybe a version 1.0 of this in another community, and that's how we're setting that up to where each of the projects is participating in to a homeowners association. Uh, I would think we would do something similar here, yeah.
And then back to the question that I posed, um, earlier to Tom about the waivers. At this point, you're comfortable with the waivers and, and the staff's position with regard to denial of some of the waivers that were brought forward?
Uh, sure, I'll, to address that, I introduce Fred Hoppy.
Yeah.
I'm Fred Hoppy. I live at 1600 Stony Hill Road in Lincoln, Nebraska. This is my hometown. We, when we put this all together, when, when you're putting together affordable housing, you, to have scale, you have to have density. And when you have so many acres, you're trying to budget your acreage for livability for the density you're creating. That, that concept is why we're asking for the waivers, particularly of the side yard. And particularly important to us is off Highway 77. We don't want to be using our space for a tiny number of people or parking lots, which is what we're forced to do if we don't have that setback. We're trying to get our community focused to the middle. And that, that's the importance of that waiver to 10 feet on the side yards and, uh, on the, the perimeter. And if you think of it in that context, so that we're budgeting our land so that it's, the, the majority of it is shareable among the density, then you'll see the importance of those, uh, waivers. And that's why we're asking for them, because it gives us a lot more flexibility to do that internal design so that we're, we're creating a better green experience and a better feeling of openness for everybody and not constricted by concrete. And, and that applies to the 10-foot setback front yard, that applies to the backyards, you know, and it, it's very difficult to design these so that you do have a feeling of, um, of community in the things without trying or forcing the situation to be individualized. And so that's what it is. And maybe we should have come forward instead of an R4 and R6 so it, you know, makes stamps a footprint there, but the, we thought it would probably be best to, to go with an R4 request zoning and, and ask for the waivers that give us the flexibility of design. And we, we would like those waivers, so we'd appreciate, uh, approval of them for the, the purpose of which they're intended.
Okay.
So does that answer your question?
It does, yes.
Okay.
As a follow-up to that, Fred.
Yeah.
Earlier, uh, Tom had mentioned, uh, that you would work that out with the city as you had a design laid out to present them, which we're not seeing at this point yet.
They've seen this design for quite a while.
Yeah, but I'm saying the actual, you know, um, final lot layout and streets and all of that type of thing. If, are you saying now you would like to see those waivers adopted at this time or to, when you come back?
We'd like those waivers adopted, Dick.
Right.
Yeah. The, the particularly, that, we can live with, uh, the, uh, perimeter setback on the south and on the west for the most part, but the, that Highway 77 does make a little bit of difference to us.
And, and if I remember right, the city wanted 20 foot and you want 10?
Yeah. I think they want 30, don't they?
I thought it was 20 in this, I could be wrong.
Uh, yeah, 10. I just, you know, it gives us the flexibility, the, particularly the difference off 77 is, forces us to put parking on it. And which, if you got parking, you also have to have a, a lane. So, you know, it doubles your concrete.
Other questions?
That's our position.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we'll take testimony in support of this application. Any testimony in support? Neutral or yes, please?
Afternoon. My name is Steve Larson, and I live at, uh, 4401 Southwest 12th Street, which is, uh, just west of where this proposed development is going to take place. As I'm sure you're all aware, um, right now, the development is dirt. So is every other development that's out there. It's all just dirt. And that means that you're going to have to have people coming and going from that area to services, all of which for the most part are on Highway 2 or Pine Lake Road. What I don't see, or I guess I don't understand, is what provisions are being made to manage the traffic that's going to need to flow from these areas, not just this one, but all of them in this area to the east to access all the various services. Because you've got Old Chaney which is closing, that leaves you Pioneers and Warlick Boulevard, if you want to call that, that an access point. I, I call it something else, but, um, and you're restricted into the width of Pioneers Park or Pioneer, West Pioneers because of Wilderness Park. So I'm not sure how people who are going to live in this area are going to get in out of it. And so I'm not opposed to the development, but, uh, I don't want to see bottlenecks occurring at these places either, which seem inevitable because, you know, you're somewhat restricted by Wilderness Park. And, um, for me, uh, the only alternatives, plus you have railroad tracks across Wilderness, West Pioneers. Uh, so I just, perhaps if somebody could enlighten me as to just how or what provisions are being made to manage the traffic flow that's going to result, certainly result from all these developments, uh, that are, that are under, underway or planned. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions? Any other testimony, neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Okay, staff questions.
Steve, can you kind of do a, a, a normal staff presentation where you go through the waivers and tell us how they're going to impact this property?
Uh, Steve Erickson, Planning Department, sure. Uh, yeah, we, we didn't go through the waivers because our understanding was they had agreed, uh, to the staff report as drafted, so we, we didn't.
And that's fine, but we still need to know like what.
Sure, sure. So, so really, the, I think what you have is you have two different viewpoints. They are working hard on their very detailed plan, and the, the scale of the plan that you have seen is the scale of the plan we have seen. It, it doesn't have dimensions, we don't have the right of way, you don't have the easements, you don't have a gradient and drainage plan, you don't show where the storm sewers are, the detention areas. There's a lot of things that'll yet change this plan. So at this level to sit and say, well, we need a five foot here and a 10 foot, uh, from our view, it's just, there's so many other things that have to be laid out.
Okay, so here's what I'm interested in then. When they say, you know, like, not less than 10 feet, you know, abutting like Highway 77, what is the right of way for Highway 77? I mean, are these, these buildings going to be right on top of Highway 77? Because I don't, I mean, right now, I'm thinking, who wants to live right on top of a busy highway? That's my concern.
So, um, a couple of different things here. They're, they're just asking for kind of a blanket perimeter setback of 10 feet. So that is the setback to the main dwelling. Um, the setback today, typically, they would be a rear yard there, and if it was a rear yard under R4, it would be 20 feet, and that would be to the dwelling. Uh, it doesn't prohibit you from having garages in the rear yard or having parking in the rear yard, and actually, that's what we think is probably more appropriate. There does need to be some garages, and there's going to need to be some parking in this area, and it would be much more appropriate to put those garages and parking close to the Highway 77. Now, I, I don't have the exact width of the right of way there. Um, today, there is a fair amount of space from the right of way edge to the edge of the pavement, but we also need to keep in mind that the Nebraska Department of Transportation at any point in the future could decide that this road needs more lanes or needs to be reconfigured and the edge of that pavement move. Partly to address the question about traffic, um, all of the intersections where today there is a traffic signal along Highway 77, all of the signals are going away. So for instance, Warlick Boulevard where today there's a traffic signal at Highway 77 and Warlick Boulevard, that is going to become an interchange. So when you're on Highway 77, you just keep moving, you don't get stopped by a signal. Uh, the same at Old Chaney. Old Chaney is being removed and will not be an intersection or an interchange. The state is actually looking at, should there be an overpass there? But for a long time, the thought has been, probably there won't be an overpass either. Previous plan, was there an idea that there would be an interchange at Pioneers, but even that is being looked at? We already have a interchange, um, up at Van Dorn. So the idea is that all the way from the interstate to the South Beltway, ultimately, all of those would be interchanges, there would be no traffic signals, um, along that way. Um, and so there's also distance, but then there's also noise. And one thing we have found, there's a lot more study about interstate noises and NDOT talking to us about trying to get residential uses further away from the interstate. While Highway 77 has less traffic than the interstate, we still think it applies that there be a fairly significant volume. And when there's no difference in the topography, the noise will be able to travel quite far. So even though the right of way might be significant, when there's nothing in the way to, to help block that up, um, so, so that was one of the reasons. Some of the other internal ones, what we pointed out, is that this is being a PUD that after approval, internally, you can come in, do an administrative amendments and get waivers and reductions and, and those things internally. And you can have a height of a multifamily building already of 55 feet. So some of the things that they were talking about setbacks might all agree to in the end, it's just a little too early right now, and the internal ones, we could always work out administratively. These external ones will be set. And so we're saying for the moment, we think they should be 20 feet. When they come back and we have all more details on a gradient and drainage plan, maybe we'll all agree that some setback on the exterior should be less, um, but we think the time to do that is later. And bit being a PUD, it can be amended at, at some point in the future. But all the internal ones, we could later, uh, work out administratively, and we hope we do, because they have some very creative designs here, so we're not discouraging of that. It's just hard to kind of, when you don't have any details, to agree to things in advance.
So what we would be agreeing to with approving this change of zone PUD is that all external setbacks would be 20 feet?
Yes, except for the one reduction along the northeast property line where it would be 10 feet, and that was because there is a significant interest, difference in the topography. So yeah, the, the main thing this is setting is the number of units, the commercial space, the three access points, the fact that we would have public streets, we would have private roadways. Um, those are the main things that are, that are being set through the approval of the PUD. All of the details, we've agreed to wait till later, the gradient and drainage plan, all of those other aspects of it.
But waiver number five is still a minimum lot area for different, uh, sizes of dwelling units?
Yes, and, and a lot of the internal aspects of this, again, can be worked out as part of the administrative approvals.
Other questions for Steve?
If they apply for TIF, we, they will come back through us?
Uh, what would come back, uh, through you is the redevelopment plan. Uh, so the redevelopment plan has, uh, yet to come forward. The first step of that was the blight study, and that has come through.
And, and at that point, that's when potentially waivers could be adjusted?
Uh, it's really two separate kinds of applications. The change of zone is all the waivers and those type of things. The TIF is really about the community support through the tax increment financing, um, and it doesn't have any ability to adjust the, the zoning aspects of it.
Other questions for Steve? Thank you.
May I address those waivers again?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason we want the waivers now is so we can go into a design process, spend our 50 or 60,000 bucks on engineers and get it designed so that it fits the, the way that we think. and get it designed so that it fits the way that we think is leasable and sellable. Not the department. Not, you know, they don't invest their money in these deals.
Sure, you have to understand that we are just used to seeing the opposite happen, though, is people spend their money, get their design, and then they come to us and say, "Hey, I need this waiver," or "I need this setback waived," that kind of thing. So this is a little out of the ordinary for us, and honestly, it makes me a little nervous. And I just want to make sure also to clarify what I am agreeing to or what I am voting on. So I'm fine with, you know, letting the internal setbacks be decided at a later time. I just, because from my standpoint right now, what I see in the staff report didn't really match up with the application letter, and I'm trying to figure out
I appreciate that.
what the heck we are agreeing to here.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And our point is, we want to get our setbacks known from the start, so that when we go into the design phase, we can follow through with the designs we already, you know, already have, and don't have to worry about a negotiation process. That's the whole concern, and that's, and particularly off of 77. But I think there's one other crucial thing you need to discuss. First of all, Highway 77 through there's got the widest right-of-way of any street in the county. And the second thing you have to understand about that is, when you're close to those right-aways, you have to go through the state to get approval for your subdivision. We've already done that. And they've said that the formal process may, we may not have the formal letter yet. But informally, they've told us, "We don't have any problem with you" and where you're putting your buildings. So the concerns we have, and the, you know, the importance to us is to get the waivers in place so we know the parameters of what we can do now, and carry through with what we've got going. And, you know, the concept of, yeah, we can agree on it, is an implication they'll allow it later. But that's not necessarily so. And so, you know, it's just important to the holistic nature of our subdivision to get those. And that's why we asked for them in the first place. And the, in our opinion, the proximity, the extra 10 feet, if you will, particularly on 77, is pretty functionally important. And the way we have things laid out on the south side and on the single-family side, it's not that important, but it certainly is where we're looking at along that 77 corridor and using multifamily. So that's the whole point. And I think it's important to know that, when it's phrased in terms of what the state's going to do, the state's already talked about this. And so, you know, we put a lot into this before today, and...
It does feel like there's a disconnect, though, because the staff felt like there was an agreement on this, and now, and brought this forward with the idea that there wasn't, that there was agreement with the applicant. And so now, we're just trying to figure out where that balance lies.
I'm not totally sure where that comes from, but the, you know, the fact, we do want to get this forward. If we don't move forward with this, you, here's what happens. You'd lose a year of applicability into, quote, "the programs." You can't build, as your affordable housing plan tells you, you're not going to build any scale of low-income housing without getting low-income housing tax credit. And so we targeted this. We started this process in February last year.
Right, right.
So we were a little surprised to see the staff report.
The individual who spoke on neutral testimony about the access and traffic, I don't know if you had any particular response to that, or thoughts on how access for this to, you know, leaving the development will work for the folks who live here?
Well, I guess my biggest, you know, this property's bounded on two sides by arterials. You know, the one thing about the property that is kind of interesting, and why it sets itself up to be a neighborhood is, it is, it is a neighborhood. It only can be a neighborhood because it's, the 47 acres sits alone. And as to, we don't believe the densities are going to affect materially the activity on the arterial South Folsom. You know, there are some requirements for LTU wants to bring it up to urban grade, but... Anyway, that's, that's the nuts and bolts of it. So, you know, we'd appreciate, I'm, you know, I guess, I'm sure we're going to have a development there, one way or the other. It's just a convenience to us to have the waivers, so that it can more or less fit the conceptualization we've brought forward to date, the density, and the, what we think's better livability. And we're the ones who run it, so anyway.
Any other, Dick?
Other question?
Yeah, Fred, on, as I'm looking at the five waivers that you've requested, the planning department is saying number two is not necessary. But I'm having a hard time understanding the average single-family dwelling lot to 35-foot, and townhouse average lot width per family to 10 feet.
Which one are you on?
That's number four.
Okay, number four.
And that would only mean a 20-foot wide...
Let me explain, yeah. What our concern was, Dick, and why we asked for that waiver. We thought if we put a stacked duplex on a 20-foot wide lot, you had to have a 10-foot allowance, not a 20-foot allowance. Because that's two families on one lot, if you will.
So...
So what we thought to have a stacked duplex on a 20-foot lot, you needed, you needed to bring down the width to a 10-foot width.
So by stacked duplex, you mean one on top of the other?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and where's that 10 feet? In the width of the unit?
No, I think the 10 feet comes in by number of units on the lot. The width of the lot, based on the number of units on the lot. I'm a little, sometimes, don't quite understand the concept, but that's what our concern was. If we set up row homes, they're 20-foot row homes, and they're stacked duplexes.
Yep.
Then the, we thought that the way it was, the code would be read, that would have to be allowable to a 10-foot lot. Now, I can point out what my concern was.
Well, and I think the response is, it's not a cumulative setback. I mean, if there's one unit or 10 units, the setback's the same. I think ultimately, we got that confirmed.
That's a width.
Width.
That's the width.
This is on a width.
Number four.
Yeah.
Perhaps we ought to have Jeremy answer that, too.
Oh, sure, yeah.
The 10-foot setback, front yard setback, huh? The front yard setback for all attached and detached single-family dwellings, they're recommending denial. What is the city standard now, Tom?
It's, when they are four, it's a five-foot setback. I mean, it's side yard restriction.
No, this is front yard.
I understand. What number was it?
Three.
Okay.
Oh, I thought we were on, we've been all over the place.
We'll come back to four.
That's, that's front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'd be 20, I think, isn't it? 25.
Front yard?
Yeah.
No, that's only the R1. The R4 is a 20-foot front yard.
20-foot front is the R4?
Right.
And basically, you're asking for a 10-foot setback?
Yeah. And we wanted to put the...
And we've got some of those in Village Gardens.
We wanted to put the housing on the street, basically.
Right, yeah, and that's what we've done, so. And so then, the five-yard, side yard setback, and zero side yard, if a party wall, which I understand, for two families dwelling in townhouses. And they said that's not necessary.
Yeah.
So then, let's go back to number four.
And I'm going to bring the engineer up, too, so.
Okay.
So, number four, the average single-family dwelling lot width, 35, those, that's easy enough. But the townhouse average lot width per family to 10 feet. Our concept, or at least the way I was looking at it, was, if you have two families on a lot, that would be, a 20-foot lot would require a 10-foot allowance.
For family.
Does that make sense?
I think I can, Jeremy Williams, Design Associates of Lincoln, 1609 N Street. The reason for that request, and I know it was confusing when it came up for everyone, but again, what Fred's trying to explain is, in the zoning, it specifies an average or minimum lot width per family on duplexes or townhomes. By zoning, it would be 20 feet. And Fred's concern was, if they do multi-story or stacked townhomes, and you had an average lot width of 20 feet with two families in that stacked townhome, it would require to be 40 feet wide.
Right.
That's what was trying to be accomplished here.
The difference between per family or per building?
Per lot, right, right. He's not trying to get approval to build 10-foot wide lots in units. It's to cover them.
We're trying to allow duplexes on 20-foot lots.
That's what was trying to be accomplished in that waiver request.
Got it.
And if you do those duplexes, what is the distance between duplexes in?
No, they'd be row homes.
Well, they'd be row homes. So again, you'd go back to having the zero-party wall or five-foot, the allowable side yard setback, correct?
Allow you...
What's unique here is...
Row homes in a 10-foot lot.
What's unique here to what Lincoln has seen for traditional townhomes is not having the stacked scenario.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions for applicant at this point? I think that Steve could perhaps provide some background on what the staff was thinking on some of these waivers. And then you'll have another opportunity for rebuttal.
Absolutely. Just try to clarify things, though. I really think this points out quite well where we just really are in the discussion.
Yes.
And let me get to the point here. Here is the site plan. So when you're being asked to make your decision on, should a setback or something be reduced, or the staff, and again, this is a great project. We like to see the variation. It's just that this is the level of detail. It is very difficult to even decide what is what. At Gatehouse Rose, they did some very nice buildings proposed, where there was two units, one above each other, attached to another one, which might be three, and attached to another one. That was planted on one lot. The average lot, it was 190 feet wide, what lot? That wasn't, so we get a little mixed up here in terms of, if they're all attached to each other, and it's a multifamily building, and it's on one lot, the average lot width is not 20 feet. It's a multifamily lot. So you're off in another circumstance, and the whole lot itself is 190 feet. Now, for us who deal with that all the time, we immediately understand that. But since we don't have that level of detail, it is difficult to come to a conclusion as to if some of the waivers that are requested are even necessary. And that's what we were trying to point out, is that we appreciate that they have a deadline, and that's why it's here today, and so we can get it to the City Council February 28th, and so they can approve it before their March 15th deadline. And so in order to do that, you don't have a lot of the details the other ones might have. They're working on the details, but again, with this level of details, one of the things we pointed out is that, for instance, along Highway 77, the drawing shows garages in Area 3 next to Highway 77. This unit over here next to Highway 77 looks like it's 50, 60 feet away. We could only find this one unit right here that actually looks like it's immediately adjacent to Highway 77. Up along here, there are garages along Highway 77. So even in the plan, conceptual plan, it did, now again, they may have viewed that as, "Oh, well, those buildings are within 20 feet." But if they're accessory buildings, they're garages, they can be within the 20 feet, because that's not actually where the people are living. Yes, the R4 does have a 25-foot front yard setback. R3 is 20. In other places, there have been reductions in the front yard setback, but not for the garages. Because you want to maintain, from the sidewalk to the garage face, you want to maintain usually typically about 22 feet, so that when somebody wants to park in front of their garage, which is typical, they don't hang over the sidewalk. If you just blanket reduce the front yard setback to 10 feet, you might then have people parking in front of their garages and hanging out over the sidewalk and blocking the sidewalk. So it's those kind of details. The other thing also working with LTU is that we're looking with their utility easements. So if your lot is only 50 feet deep, and you ask for a front yard setback of 10, where are the utility easements for ALO and LES and everybody else, which typically might be in the back? And those are the details that you work out when you have an exact site plan, and you have kind of everybody at the table, ALO and LES and water and sewer and everybody together. And so again, a lot of these might be very appropriate, but because we're at this level at this point, it wasn't exactly clear. But again, if there's any other details we can provide, but yes, it is 25 feet average lot width per family. So if you have two family, and you're going to put it on one lot, then that lot would need to be 50 feet wide.
Got it.
That's what I needed before. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, for the very last time, applicant rebuttal. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
The only thing I'll add, again, Tom Houston for the developer, I'll add that in the event that we can't agree on these issues during the administrative amendment process, we could be back in front of you.
Understood.
I would prefer that.
Yeah. Yep. All right, thank you very much.
I move to close public hearing.
Second, Edens?
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Reenberg?
Yes.
Romanios?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
I would move to approve Annexation 2101. Campbell?
Second, Ball?
Discussion. We can discuss both at once, and then we'll proceed with the vote.
Ball?
No, we're going to discuss.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
I have enough problems at the present time with the waivers that the city is turning down, as well as the waivers that are requested. And I think it would be better if they get their design finished, that we approve the change of zone, but withhold any comment on waivers. I mean, approval of any waivers or denial of any waivers until it would come back to us later on. Having had many of the things they're requesting in our own development, the reason ours didn't have to have all those waivers was because we rewrote the city codes. And the Planning Commission of the council adopted our lists and depths and everything as the city codes for that development. So I think there's some ways that they can do this that don't get as complicated. But I would rather see where they need the waivers specifically, which I would be in favor of granting with this type of development. But I'm uneasy granting them now, because we don't know what, how that's going to affect them. don't know what, how that's going to affect things. So, I will be voting, I don't know how we, how I'll make the motion, but on the change of zone, I want to set the waivers aside at this point for that to come back to us with a refined plan.
So, Dick, you set the waivers aside. There were a couple that were actually approved in the staff report, so can you say that you would move forward with, as presented in the staff report for the change of zone?
At this point in time, yes, I could do that, but I, I'm a little concerned that they may need one or two of the waivers, and by passing those at this time, then the staff is really not in a situation where they have to discuss or compromise.
Just to clarify, this item is on the annexation, correct?
Right. Correct, but we're discussing both.
But we're discussing both of them.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. So, it'd be the next item where you could then have the conditions and the changes on in front of you.
Correct.
I guess the thing that I would say is that where they are in agreement, we could accept those, but where they are in disagreement at this point in time, those should come back to us with their final plan.
Or they, or determined by administrative amendment.
Right.
Right.
Other discussion? Yeah, Gloria.
I just wanted to say, this project as a whole excites me. We talk all the time about low-income infill, and particularly my neighborhood, and we lose green space every single time. So, for them to purposely plan out that we're gonna have green space in this, and that there's gonna be low-income housing included in this, excites me. I agree with Dick on the amendments that the city recommended denial that, to deny them without bias, that we assume they will come back and be approved in some way, shape, or form. But I just wanted to say that. And my other comment was, I hope, say this to the developers, that when you talk about equality and equity in your housing, that you remember to make them accessible, some of them, not all of them, but I'd love to roll through your neighborhood and look at some of those houses.
I will agree with my fellow commissioner that I was really excited to read about this project, and I think it has tremendous potential. I'm a little bummed I don't have little kids anymore, because this is the kind of neighborhood I think would be great to be a part of, so I am excited about the overall content.
I agree that this is a good concept overall. This is appropriate for annexation. The change of zone, I do get hesitant when we don't have some of those details. That's not normally how we proceed, and I understand that you guys have a deadline to get some financing, and that's why we're doing it this way, but it's so much easier for us when we have, you know, just hearing even this concept that the garages are, you know, next to Highway 77, I mean, that, that part of the presentation, that is the stuff that I need to hear, because that makes a huge difference as to when I'm thinking about approving this. I think it's essential, I think it's a great idea to mix the income housing. The mixed income is, I think that's a great concept, and I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that's a good concept. I would like to say, however, that I would be in favor of, for this project, anyway, because of its location, I would be in favor of, it's kind of weird to say this, higher height limits, or, you know, going above for better design. You know, having true roofs instead of those funky ones. If you guys remember from the Waouka project, I just don't care for that design. And I know that we're not here for design purposes, we're here for land use, but FYI, I would much prefer here because, you know, it's not built up around this, and that's the difference for me on this land use here. But I will definitely approve the annexation. I am still hesitant on that change of zone with all the waivers. This is a pretty messy application, and I still feel the lack of clarity between the staff report and the application.
With regard to the annexation, I, again, fantastic project, really exciting, the mixed, mixed income, mixed use, really appreciate how well you worked with Hope Community Church and bringing them into the process. I mean, that's just a really excellent example of that community engagement and public-private partnership that we love to see. So, certainly commend everyone involved for the level of collaboration that's been involved. Shelley, will you call the vote, please?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
And this is for, this is, let me just clarify, this is for annexation 21011.
Right.
Okay. Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Roenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero for approval of annexation.
I would move approval of change of zone 21055, accepting only those waivers that are agreed upon by both staff and the applicant, and that any other waivers be either through administrative amendment or coming back to the planning commission for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval with accepting of the waivers that both staff and applicant agreed to, without any action on any of the other waivers brought forth. Tim, how does that sound?
So, basically, you're...
Hold on, we don't have a second.
You're moving to accept the staff report as proposed.
No, because the staff was...
I don't think that's what Dick said.
No, the staff report was recommending denial.
Oh, okay, so let me clarify, 'cause actually, there are some in there. We just, I guess we hid them too well. So, we'll go back to the conditions of approval for the staff report. So, conditions of approval for annexation, accepted those. The conditions of approval for the change of zone, so if you accept the staff report, you're accepting that this would be 650 dwelling units, 15,000 square feet of commercial space. The setback would be reduced along the northeast property line to 10 feet. That was requested by the applicant.
Right.
We agreed to that. And then, we actually had some other reductions in here, a reduction of the single-family lot width to 35 feet. We didn't talk a lot about that, but that is something that you do see in other areas. We had some very nice single-family lots done at 35 feet. And also, a reduction in the lot area to 2,100 square feet for single-family and 1,500 square feet for single-family attached. Again, the lot area is, how much lot do you have per unit? And those are things that we have seen very much in other areas. We've seen particularly where a townhome development, that'd be a single-family attached, you have a 50-foot by maybe 90-foot lot, and they get their whole unit on that. So, having a smaller average lot, 1,500 square feet for attached and 2,100. So, those are things that I think were acceptable to the applicant, but it's not all of the waivers that were requested, but those are the ones that are in the staff report.
So, we had a, Dick made a motion, Rich seconded. Further discussion?
Dick, is that what you were intending?
What Steve just mentioned right there, those items are the acceptable ones. The ones that still are in contention are the 10-foot versus 20-foot setback on the west side, or east side, and the stacking of the units for the size of the lot.
Right, and I think that what Tracy said is correct, that the fact that they're, that they're not included now means that they're denied for now, it does not mean that they cannot be brought forward later.
Right, that's correct.
In whatever format that would be.
That's right.
All right. Any further discussion by the commission? Shelley?
Oh, oh, wait. Hold on. We have some...
I want to make sure we're either denying or approving the motion here, right? So, what we have on the report, or different from the report based on the denials that's in here? So, the motion was not what's on the report, if I understood that correctly.
So, I, I mean, the report includes the conditions of approval.
I think what Dick was saying is he is really wanting to approve the staff report as written. He worded it differently, but really, those waivers, some of those waivers are already denied, and so, it, we're really voting on, are we approving it as presented with conditional approval for change of zone?
21055, okay.
210, change of zone 21055.
Right, okay.
Good question.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Roenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on agenda, on an item not on the agenda, may do so. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Cor.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Roenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on agenda, on an item not on the agenda, may do so. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Cor.
Shelley?